Good evening. I would like to call this meeting the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee at Order. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. Your image and/or voice may be broadcast. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're going to start out with public comment and communications, and then we will approve the consent agenda. And then Al is going to take over because tonight we are going to vote on the Chair and the Vice Chair, and we actually need to re-vote on the District Clerk and the Assistant Treasurer. We're going to table, probably table, appointment of subcommittees so people have time to think about what they want to do. Okay. So just a few things before I get into public comment, I just want to say welcome to Beth. Thank you for joining, and, um...
(applause)
It's a lot, so just don't, just take it in stride, and if you have questions, please feel free to ask. Usually, we have a mentor for new people, so we can talk offline about who would be best fit to be your mentor, and then that would be the person that you would go to with questions and hopefully try to meet with every so often.
Congratulations to Lisa and I, no forgetting you.
Thanks, Jess.
(applause)
And we'll have a name play for you about next week, we can honor it.
And Matt as well, yeah.
And Matt, yes, sorry, yes.
Yeah, and we have a new, uh, we have our student rep here tonight, so lots of changes. We have a new student rep, his name is Matthew Dowd, so he will be speaking later on. And one other thing I want to say before we get started is I really want to thank everyone that came out and voted, because we had a huge turnout in both towns, and I just think that's great that people are getting involved in something that really affects everybody in the town, right? The school district is very important. Okay, so without further ado, we'll jump right into public comments. Is anyone here to make a public comment? Maybe just state your name, where you're from.
Sure.
Christina Calpol-Maderos, and I'm from Boylston. So I wanted to thank Megan and the Superintendent. What I was here to talk about, they, you guys have already added it to the agenda, which is amazing. Thank you for doing that so swiftly. I've had kiddos that are coming up into middle school one there now, one's going to be there next year, so as a parent naturally, I'm starting to look at options for them, what kind of courses, like what are their interests and things like that. So when I sort of dug deeper, I, as well as a few other parents that I've talked to, I think we all assumed that there are multitude of options for the kids, right? They can come here, they can do out of, you know, out of district, they can go to Assabette. And when I was looking at this, it's my understanding that we, Boylston doesn't get to participate in the lottery to go to Assabette. And I know the lottery, I guess, is fairly new, based on a law that the state passed in 2001, for, you know, for various reasons, for fairness and things like that. But I didn't know that Berlin students have the chance. So as a middle school parent, that sort of concerns me, because obviously I want, like, I want as many options for my kid as possible, right? And they're not all going to be fit for academics, some are going to want hands-on, you know, they're going to want to go to trades or whatnot. So I'm glad that you guys are going to talk for today. I'm here to listen to that discussion because I'm very interested in it. I have done some research, and just for other parents who may be watching this or listening, I know that Assabette is pretty much at capacity. So for, even if we are in what we call, I guess, a secondary town, which would afford our kiddos at opportunity in Boylston a chance to go there, it's my understanding that, oh, they only took primary town students last year for admission, because they just don't have the spots. And it's across the board. We're seeing kids more interested in wanting these types of skills and things, even if they plan on going to college, they really want to work in engineering and technology, and all of that can start in the high school. So there's just kids that want to go to these technical high schools. So for my kids, I have, you know, I have a bunch. I have kids that are probably go straight to college, and then I have other kids that are probably going to want to do robotics or whatnot. So it concerns me that the Boylston kids don't really have as much of a chance as the Berlin kids. And even, even the Berlin kids are probably, you know, they're getting less and less spots as we go on. There was something in the news recently about Schuhsbury and Lester, they're partnering, even, they've been dealing with the last four years, just now realizing that they, they have so many students that even Assabette wouldn't be able to accommodate them. So they're even starting their own vocational programming, which is probably, you know, not something that Boylston can do on its own. So I think we really have to think about the next, you know, kids in sixth grade right now, by the time that they're going to go to high school, we really need to make sure that the kids now have options. I know Assabette is growing, they've said they're going to grow, they're looking at investing, but, you know, that's like a 10-year, 15-year plan, they're going to build new buildings, and they have to take more kids, but what do we do about the kids that are in school now? So I'm hoping that you guys will have a good discussion today. I know there's lots of parents that are going to be interested in this, because their kids are starting to come to middle school, and they're going to want to explore these types of options. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, so for communications, I did receive several emails, kind of echoing what Christina said about why doesn't Boylston have a solid option for a vocational school, but Berlin has this relationship with Assabette. It's not fair, it's not equitable, what happened? So I did put that in my Chair's report tonight, and I know Al, Al and I have discussed it, and he's going to weigh in, and so we'll wait until we get to that. But I did have four emails, I think, from parents, kind of questioning that. And I think it kind of came to, when, to Christina's point, when it was in the news about the Schuhsbury and the Lester, you know, the new vocational school that they're starting, which is amazing. All right. Did anyone else have any other communications?
Yeah, so Al and I went to the conference, the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Assistors of Superintendents, and one of the lunchtime talks was a dignity index, and so I grabbed all the extras on the tables. But some schools have it as kind of their way to talk to each other, and some of them have just five and above. So I just thought it was really important that I got all for us, and that maybe consider it to be something school-wide, but to talk with civility and dignity to each other and separate the subject from the person. So, just wanted to do that. And then also, I got a chart-
Do you want to pass those around?
Yeah. I also got a chart of parliamentary motions, too, that I'll pass around to Robert's rules. And then I just also wanted to congratulate DES. You know, Matt Meekum and Megan and Superintendent had a lot of work on the Accelerated Repair Project from MSBA, and I read online that it was accepted for DES group, so that's amazing work, thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Thanks, Jessica.
This is very helpful.
It's a fantastic conference, and I'll try to sum up and have it on a future agenda when we have M and F tonight, but there were really good topics, and kind of, for your report later on, last year, there was a Blackstone Collaborative Session, and it was schools, area schools that got together and did evening and weekend programs to offer their kids kind of little mini trades.
And we could talk a little bit more about that one in the agenda right now. It is definitely, yeah, there's a lot to talk about. In Worcester Technical, when they were moving that forward, so it will be a good conversation to have, very well in general, forward to it.
So thank you for attending that. It was great that you were able to make it down here. Okay, any other communications? Okay, consent agenda. Could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So Laurie, Jess, any discussion on that? All in favor?
I am.
I am and I as well. That motion passes. Okay, next up, we are going to move forward with the Chair and Vice Chair. So the way it works is somebody nominates somebody for these positions, and then we vote. So I think there was one other thing. I said District Clerk, and I said Assistant Treasurer, but I think, Jess, you had mentioned there was a position, like a liaison with the MAS-C?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, the MAS-C delegate.
Delegate.
On Friday afternoon, there was a two-hour session of different items that were being voted on, and so every committee designates a delegate, and then you vote on those topics. Some of us got it in the mail, but, and so there are different resolutions that are voted on, amended, and put forth to the state legislation to try to pass those. So I just went and listened. So that's something that we should appoint for the next year around.
So if we appoint a delegate, then that person would be able to vote on behalf of BBRSD on these certain things?
Yeah, so we would have a discussion prior to the conference-
It would be on our, yeah.
And, you know, go over the different topics, and say how one wants to vote, or if there was an amendment you'd want put forward, or-
And just through the chair, those resolutions, so what we've done in the past, Aaron and I actually, and him and Wilberham, is we go through the resolu, we appoint a delegate ahead of time, right? So they're going to represent us down at the MAS-S, MAS-C conference. We look at the resolutions, by the way, the resolutions aren't binding, right? They're just getting feedback from the different school committees, how they feel. We literally spend the meeting reading them over, people are giving their input, they then give, like, how they should vote, whether yes or no, or whatever the, their resolution is. And then this way, then that delegate takes that information. They're not voting for themselves, they're voting for the school committee, given that information, passing forward. And again, they're just resolutions, just getting a feedback. Any school committee can put a resolution and say, hey, I'd like to get some feedback from other school committees in the state of Massachusetts, how they feel about this. But it's definitely something we should be looking at before the next one comes next year.
Yeah, I mean, Lisa and I didn't even know any of that. And I was like, oh, you're going, you're the delegate? I was like, yeah, I don't know, no.
Laurie wants to say something.
So I just wanted to, I remember we had, I don't know, I think Mike was on the committee at the time, we, I think maybe Angela had gone as our representative, and we voted her, or specifically, one of the votes was, should students that age sixteen or older have the right to vote in local elections? And I believe the committee was split down the middle, so our delegate didn't vote for that one, but that's exactly how we did it. We met as a committee, talked about the, what they'd be voting on, and then we voted, and then our delegate represented us.
And it's good to have a delegate there, just so when you check in, right, it's very, it's very organized, okay, what district are you representing? So they check up, yes, you're over there. So with us not having a delegate representing us there officially, this is something we want to try to avoid in the future.
Okay, so I'm wondering, do we want to appoint, so maybe we don't want to appoint that now, because what if, for whatever reason, the person can't go to the conference next year, then that is totally, so maybe we wait until next fall, and we have that something on the September agenda, we start looking at the, anything we want to move, and then we figure out, like, who's going to go? I know you went two years in a row, Jess, like, I don't know. It's a lot to have to go down the Cape for a long weekend, but, you know, somebody else, maybe a few people want to go next year, whatever, maybe, I don't know.
It's good when it's long.
It's right, exactly. Maybe you're like, no, I've done it two years in a row, I don't want to go. So I don't, I kind of want to hold off on appointing or voting on that, but I just wanted to, like, put it out there and keep it on the back burner for something that will have to be appointed, you know, whether we do it at the end of the year, or whether we do it in September. All right, so then without further ado, does everyone agree on that, maybe hold off, so we know, so we're not obligating someone a year in advance to go to a conference?
Makes sense.
Okay, all right. So without further ado, all right, Al's going to take over.
So this is the one time that superintendents enjoy the most, it's the moment in time where they completely control these meetings, but the only thing that I'm going to do forward is do the Chair, and then after the Chair is appointed, then they'll go forward, the Chair will then go forward and move the Vice Chair and go forward. The other thing you just need to be aware of, that we have a little thing in hand over, you can nominate yourself as well. So at this point, I'm looking for anyone that would like to nominate someone or nominate themselves for Chair of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District Chairperson. Do I have any nominations?
Can I pick an option?
Yes.
To nominate Jessica DeBlau Verdi to the Chair?
I believe. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second. Do I have any other nominations for Chair of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee?
Can I make a nomination?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Michael Topman.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Any second?
Yep.
Or Lisa did. Second?
Yep, got two seconds. Okay, great. Any other nominations for Chair of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee? Okay, so we have two nominations. I have Jessica, and I have Mike. At this point, we'll just go around and do our votes. Okay, if we want to start off, please. So you're either choosing Jessica or-
So we'll just say the name?
Yes, please.
No, I'm going to choose Mike.
Choose Michael? Sorry, Mike? Uh, yes, I'll choose myself. Good. I know this sounds corny, but this is the way, it's just protocol, that's all. Next.
I would choose Mike. I would choose Mike.
I would choose myself.
I would choose Jessica.
So I have afforded to vote, so Mike is our new Chairperson of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee. Congratulations, Mike.
(applause)
Can we switch seats?
Yep, you want to switch seats, or you want, okay, I'm going to move this up to-
We've got limited time on the recording, so-
All right, okay, all right, just keep rolling.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I can find the agenda, so, you're going to vote for us? Yep. All right, so same thing, any nominations for the Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate, sorry. I'd like to nominate Megan.
Okay, second.
Since she knows how to read.
Second? I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay.
I will second vote.
Any others? All right, Lisa?
Megan?
Megan?
I'll vote for myself.
Laurie?
I would vote for Megan.
Jess?
Jeff.
Beth?
Jeff.
I will also vote for Megan. Megan is the Vice Chair. As far as appointments to subcommittees or voting with subcommittees, I don't know how you guys feel about this, but with everything going on tonight, Beth being new, why don't we leave subcommittee's status quo for now, and then if you are happy on the subcommittee at all, and you want to change, or you're interested in something, Beth, if you're interested in working on any particular one, let's talk about it over the next few weeks, and at the December meeting, we'll vote, you're going to organize those. Does that work for everybody?
My only concern is the contract, it's going to be coming up.
We have, Laurie and I have been working on that as negotiations of committee. We met informally with some reps, had a good conversation, but we're going to be talking more with that later on. Through chair, Nicole, do we have a listing, like, what it all entails of being each one of these subcommittees, so that people, so should we have an idea of what they're all?
I probably have something somewhere, great, from my back in the day that I can get up.
There was something in the handbook that gave, like, a synopsis.
Okay, good, just so you know, we're flying into before you go, my tour. Great.
Beth, if you read the annual report, um, yeah, it should, I believe it's in there, kind of, what each sub-
Yeah, so subcommittees are policy negotiations, success in technology, budget-
Budget.
And superintendent. Superintendent, right. Pretty simple explanatory, but they need to work on. We have, we can reorganize everything in December, or leave them as they are. Beth, let me know what you're interested in working on. Julie was on the budget subcommittee, so there's only one person currently on that, but we can figure that out in December.
And we can make new ones, right?
We could make new ones, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, actually, one of the meetings, I asked if there was examples of, like, typical subcommittees might have that in there or not.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's talk about that, too. The only thing I would ask, just because it is time-sensitive, Megan, would you replace me on the superintendent's search committee?
Yes.
Because, you know, Laurie, you've got some information that you're going to need to get going on. And that's Jess, Laurie, and Megan.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, um, back to, all right, back to our report, so our student rep, Al Dowd.
Oh, that's me.
You're up.
So I just have, like, a list of, like, things that have been going on that I just want to, like, run through, I guess. So I'll start off with our Student Council, our High School Student Council events. So we've held, since the beginning of the year, we've had a couple of events. We have, like, sixth-grade orientation, homecoming, our haunted hallway, and so far, all of our events this year have actually gone really well. We've been raising a good amount of money for our Student Council, which is great, because that money all just gets recycled into, you know, making our student event better. Our food drive, I believe, is probably going to start tomorrow. We have our Thanksgiving food drive every year. Food goes either to the food shelter, and also there are a couple of the Honto families that we put together Thanksgiving dinners for. So it always goes well. In the past, we've always raised a lot, so hopefully it'll be the same this year. Ace Club was just a club I wanted to highlight real quick, because we were thinking about this one. It's a really great club for student mentoring, so high school students such as myself meet normally once a week to either tutor, help study for a test, help with homework for any middle or high school student. I believe it was, I forget exactly when we started, I think it might have been a couple of years ago.
Three years.
Three, that's right, three years ago we started this. And it's been going really well. We have a lot of kids that come every week to just, you know, get a little extra help on something. And we are also trying to think of ways to maybe even move it to elementary schools. The new lunch menu, this is a big item for the students. As far as I hear, everyone really loves the new lunches. They're real, like, there's a lot of options, and they're all really good tasting, and as well as the breakfast, too. The breakfasts are really awesome. Like, I know myself, I get breakfast at school every single day, because I, I do not have time in the morning to, like, grab something to eat, so lunches, new food menu, really great. Sports, so we had, last year, Class of 2024, when they graduated, they had a lot of student athletes. So our sports teams are in a growing year, really, but they've been, regardless of that, they've been doing really well. So our Girls' Rock Street Soccer Team won the Central Mass Championships, and tonight, they are playing in the round eight of the Mass Tournament. I think it's six thirty, so hopefully they'll do well tonight. I think our football team is a couple of games away from going to the Super Bowl again. I mean, that'd be awesome if we did a three-peat, so, yeah, we can hope. The Booster Club's been highlighting the senior athletes during home games, which is really great. And then, I titled this section, General Student Experience. So I wanted to say, like, as far as I know, I mean, so I'm, you know, everything is going really great, I think. I really wanted to highlight the fact that our staff and our teachers are phenomenal. Every teacher I've ever known here has been extremely understanding and also enthusiastic about their job, which I think is really, like, important when you have a teacher that wants to be a teacher, because it makes a big difference for the students. Then one note here is school spirit. So this is, like, sort of our job on Student Council, which is to try and increase our school spirit. And I will say, this year has actually been going pretty well on that. We've, we're always trying to get students more involved with the community, but this year is definitely one of the better years out of the past for that. Should I mention this now, too? Okay, so I had this little, I had this little idea that Miss Akbari tells me is a really good idea, so I'm going to say about it. I was thinking, because I was asking around my, some of my other student friends, and I was asking them, basically, how much do you know about what happens at a school committee meeting? And most of them gave roughly the same answer of, I don't really know what happens at a school committee meeting. So I was thinking, as the student rep, if I could, like, just type up, like, little bullet-pointed headlines of what happens here at the school committee meeting that would be of interest to students. It's like, most students probably aren't going to care too much about, like, the boring, the, sorry, the-
It's fair.
The, the business parts of things, but there are definitely things I'm sure that happen that the students will have opinions about. And so I was thinking, if I could just type up quick bullet point headlines to send out in, like, you know, like, I know to Honto has, like, the Stags Weekly, stuff like that, just so that way the students kind of have an idea of what's going on in school committee meetings.
Nice job.
Love it. Great.
Any other questions?
Can't wait to see it.
Excellent.
Nice job. What happens during Haunted Hallway?
So Haunted Hallway, we normally, we take, normally it's the math wing, so if you're looking, it's that wing up on the second floor, right there. And we ask all the teachers in that wing if we can basically take their rooms and decorate them into a haunted house. So each room gets a different theme, so like, you know, one room is like a doll, like a scary dollhouse, or there's like spider rooms, or whatever it is. And then we have the Student Council members and, who dress up in, you know, scary costumes. And it's honestly probably our biggest fundraiser of the year for Student Council, where people line up, they go through the haunted hallway. And then there's normally a couple other things, so I think we have, I think there's normally an art show that the art club puts on.
The band.
The band plays, yeah, the, and then the bonfire, that's my favorite part. That's out, out on the field, we have a big bonfire with pallets in the fire department, so.
The hallway is chaos in a good way.
It's legitimate, it's very, it's very-
It was chaos in a good way, chaos.
This year's was, this year's was really good, we put it together.
Yeah.
Can you run that as fundraisers?
Yeah, yeah, so the haunted hallway, that's our fundraiser for, one of our fundraisers for Student Council.
It's a charge per run?
Yeah, I think we normally charge, like-
Like a ticket fee or something?
Yeah.
And kids went through multiple times.
Yeah, they go, yeah, they go through some.
It's not one coverall, it's like each of you went through, it was like a charge.
They pay every time, they keep going.
I usually hijack a small child, so they're go easy.
They don't, they don't, they don't.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I think the Ace Club is, is really great. You would think, once you get up to the high school level, that being peer tutored, there's some resistance from a high school kid wanting to be tutored by someone their own age, but the kids do a really great job of doing it with them, making them feel like they're doing their homework together, like they're studying, they, they just do a really nice job. And I was hesitant about it, and it, they do a great job.
I appreciate that. I'm, so I'm the president of Ace Club this year, and so I will say, I've had a lot of students say that it's like, sometimes it's just like hearing it from someone else that can help someone, like, get the idea of what they're learning. But it's definitely, yeah, I've definitely heard a lot of positive feedback, which is why I'm happy to continue to try and make it bigger.
Yeah.
Thanks. Next is the Chair's report, and so Megan says this is all your occasion. Why don't you take this one?
Okay. So first off, FY25 calendar. So we had one parent reach out, and a lot of people informally kind of complained about the quantity of half-days. It's no secret. It's causes a little bit of lack of routine. I know it's difficult for the parents, and the reason why we did it, I think, was Carol had said, you know, it was something the union wanted, and the whole reason why the school committee was behind it is because we felt that the added PD time would hopefully help improve scores and improve the whole experience for the students. So somebody had asked if there was even an option to change the calendar in midway through the year. And so I spoke with Al about it, and the answer to that question is absolutely not. We have bus contracts, food contracts, teacher contracts, there's too much that's already in place.
Professional women that's already lined up.
Yeah.
PDPs that teachers are going to be receiving for the professional women, that they need for the recertification. So I know that, I've heard some concerns as well, too, about the half-days. What I can tell you is the calendar needs to stay as it is right now with all of our contracts and play with it, but we're already meeting, I think our first meeting is actually this Thursday, right, that we're meeting to work on the calendar. So we'll be able to give that to you very soon for not only next year, but the year after as well, too. And we're taking into account all of this information, but we're also going to be sending a survey out to families as well, to say, hey, what do you, what do you think about this? Because we're hearing some from some, but we want to hear from everybody, what they're feeling about this as well, too. But please know that we were hearing it, and we're taking that into account as we're creating next year and the year after this calendar, that we're going to hope to get to here very soon, either in January or early February, so you'll have a calendar file that you can load in for the next two years.
And yeah, I think it's just finding that happy compromise, because we do, we don't want to devalue the PD and that time for teachers, but at the same point in time, it needs to be a little bit more consistent and not as random, like the Wednesday, half-day on Wednesday, and this half-day, and then three days later, a vacation, and stuff like that. So a little bit more thoughtful, maybe on placement of PD days.
And that will be helpful to us, even when we're starting negotiations with the bus companies, right?
Right.
So that's all about to bid, so all of that information will be helpful to us. We need to have that calendar set, so when we're sitting down, having those conversations with them.
So the other thing I wanted to talk about briefly is the vocational education options for Boylston. So we have, we've had a- So we have, we've had a lot of people come forth and, and kinda say, it's not fair. So the way it works currently is I believe Berlin students have, uh, they're like a tier one or they have a direct line to Assabat where if a Berlin, if a student that lives in the town of Berlin, even though they go to Tonto, wants to go to Assabat, they have a leg up over the Boylston kids that wanna go. And I, I believe what happened in the past is before we regionalized, I think Assabat wasn't as busy. And I think what happened was Boylston didn't have to pay to be a tier one school or whatever category it was. So I was trying to wrap my brain and look back in the minutes and see what happened. I know Jeff explained this to us. It would just be me, Lauren, and Mike, but, but I couldn't find it and I can't remember.
I believe state law changed.
Yes, in twenty twenty-one, correct.
So you had to pay into, I don't know if it's called a consortium or what it's called. Berlin pays into that, Boylston does not. And in the past, it used to be a, it used to be a system where it was based on merit. And what they found was, just to give an example, Berlin was paying money that goes towards like the roof and everything else. Boylston wasn't, all of Berlin's kids weren't getting in, some of Boylston's were. So it was a fairness, the state did it out of fairness. So the rules changed and therefore we had to adapt. And as you pointed out, Assabat is getting fuller and fuller and fuller. So even though we might have some Boylston kids accepted, say, so first couple of weeks of September, they're at capacity with even the towns that they have. But it was because I believe the state had changed the way it was done for equity reasons because of the people that were paying into it.
Okay, and that makes sense. But what I remember was that there was no way that, it wasn't that, yes. Do you remember Jeff explaining that to us? I don't know why. So we hear you, we think it's un, it is not fair. It's not right. And the, the district, I'm challenging the district, or you know, we can talk about it as a committee, but I think we, we want the district to look into this. And I spoke, again, I spoke with Al and it sounds like he's already got a plan in place, so I'll let you.
So just a couple of things, and just to clarify, so in my, my knowledge base is with Worcester Technical High School, learning more about Assabat. I mean, my extended aspect right now is I take a night class there myself on Monday nights, but that's, and that place is booming there. And we've had an opportunity this past week to sit with the superintendents for the vocational technical high schools that are there as well too. So that was really informative. The other thing you need to know is it's a different mindset now. So kids that graduate from Worcester Technical High School, ninety-five percent of them go off to colleges and universities. They don't want them just to be plumbers or electricians. They want them to be an old business so they can manage the plumbing and electrical business as well too. So the majority of those kids now go off to colleges and universities. So I'm a little behind on the whole Assabat thing in terms of Berlin, Boylston. I had a meeting today with Greg Picarello, did I pronounce his last name right? So him and I are going to be meeting with Lauren Gonzalez, who oversees the Assabat program, so we can find out a little bit more. My understanding right now is that Berlin does get some seats, right? Uh, Boylston gets the, they get to apply there, but they're sort of in a different grouping. And, and this is my, my really overview of my understanding of this. I'll, I'll fill a little bit of it and I'll continue to keep this on our agenda. But after I meet with Lauren and Greg, and then we'll get a better understanding of how we can get Boylston students to be able to participate in this. It, it is an unbelievable opportunity for us kids to give them, to give them choices, right? And this is something we really want to work on with our kids. And the other piece about that, which we can look at down the road, and Lisa and I and Renee and Rich have already had a little bit of conversations about creating pathways as well too. So if our kids can't get into technical high schools, right, we're no longer on vocational, they're called moving towards technical high schools, that the thing we really wanna be looking at is what type of pathways are we creating for our kids that don't get into these technical high schools? When we do in terms of health, business, so that kids can start having an understanding of where they wanna go and have a feel for it before they apply to colleges and universities. But this is, this is, this is the way to go, right? We need to give our kids opportunities. I apologize for not knowing as much as I should, um, but I will, after I have these meetings, I'll have a better understanding and see how we can get more Boylston kids being able to participate in this type of programs. That's my limited knowledge, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, no, and, and I appreciate it and I, it's great that you have a meeting. And this is something that was kinda just came up, and I think the reason why it came up was because Choose Free and Lester are coming together and they're, they have this new technical high school that they're gonna share. Um, and I know a lot of people have questioned, you know, can't we be a part of that? So I mean, I don't know if that's something we can look into. It sounds like at this point, it's not something we're gonna do right now, right? But maybe something we can look into and see if they're accepting other towns. Um, and if the whole Assabat thing doesn't work out, can, you know, can Boylston get in with another technical high school? Uh, so that, at least there is an option.
So I'm gonna ask the chair if this can be a reoccurring agenda item, because I think this is a conversation that we need to keep covering.
Yeah, we're working on through that. Yeah, and that's all I wanted to do was kinda get it out there and just like put it out to the committee so that everybody's aware. Um, and instead of, you know, two, three years ago, it was presented as like, yeah, there's nothing you guys can do about it, is what it is. No, like, let's not accept that. Let's see if there's something else we can do and let's look at other options out there, cause it, it really is an inequity.
If you ever doubt about technical schools, I'll, I'll take you through a tour not only of the Assabat, but Worcester Technical High School. It's an incredible opportunity for kids to have. And it's just, we need to be given, so all kids went differently, right? Universal design for learning, right? Not everyone does well by standing and having it, it delivered to them from a teacher, but being able to have that hands-on is incredible for our kids. And anyone that goes to Assabat or Worcester Tech, they still have to pass DMCS, they still have to graduate. But they're doing in half the amount of time, cause half of it they're in the classroom, half of it they're doing rich grade. So it's incredible opportunity for our kids.
Yeah, Al, as far as making it a standing item on the agenda, definitely, that's an example of just what are we doing at the school committee, right? It's parents who are, have a thought about one thing, come in and, and tell us and talk to us. So, you know, and it started on social media, but it doesn't go anywhere else. Someone comes in and actually brings it to the committee's attention. Instead of, you know, going through other ways, coming here and now we will do this, cause there seems like there's interest. If we don't know there's interest, we have other things that need to focus.
And, and also to, through, through the chair, like, they might have interest in, we're all, everyone around this table is saying, yes, this is something we should be involved in, right? This is real important for us, important for our kids. So at least get us a seat at the table with Assabat, and at least they'll know what Boylston is interested in having this table. It's a great opportunity, if it happens.
So Jock Core was at the conference again, and so you can have dual enrollment through your senior year of high school. So that I think is a really good valid option. We can have them come in, you know, present their program to us. Um, I got the card of someone I know actually that's in that program. And then also Mass Academy for Mountain Science is another option for our students junior and senior year. And I know some students have gone in the past, um, someone, you know, a friend of mine went and really loved it. But it's senior year, you're essentially doing WPI classes, um, but you still do sports with Honto, so.
That program is, is incredible. They get their freshman year in WPI as well too. I think they take fifteen kids a year throughout the entire state, uh, so it's, it, but it's not for every kid, right? It's not for every kid, so it's gotta be, you know, my, my son got accepted and lasted about two weeks. It just wasn't for him, right? Instead I paid for Yukon afterwards as well too, but it's not for all, it's not for all kids, right? But it is an incredible opportunity, but, and making sure for our guidance councils that they know that they're available for, for kids as well too. Yeah, it's a great program.
All right, thanks Megan. Uh.
Aaron, you're up. Alrighty, so um, a couple of things I want to just start by sharing with you, sort of two weeks in. I've been kind of looking at, at things and prioritizing things and kind of making sure that things are operating. So just a few highlights to what's going on, some of my priorities. You know, the very first thing is I wanna make sure that payroll is operating. And I have to say that Patty Sponzberg has done, I honestly may have just mispronounced her last name, sorry Patty. But she's done a fabulous job of getting payroll in order in a very short amount of time. Uh, we do have a, a few small sort of outstanding concerns, but those have all largely been taken care of and we're working on those items that remain. Uh, we are working to close out the fiscal twenty-four school year. District does need to submit some annual reports to the state. Uh, it's a matter of reconciling a few accounts from the summer. Uh, we're having a lot of success matching our records to get some state report. We did add the Accounts Receivable Module to Infinite Visions, which is our accounting system. For whatever reason, the district did not have the Accounts Receivable Module, which meant that all receivables were being posted using journal entries, which you can do almost anything using journal entries, but it's not the most efficient and effective means of doing so. Uh, so we'll be um, working on configuring and training on that December sixth and December ninth, so that we can make that provision. We also now have an Accounts Payable and Receivable Coordinator, Arnold Cerizo. Uh, he started work this morning, so he's got a lot of sort of ramp up work. He started work today, he's kind of organizing the space, getting through some of the paperwork that's kind of been sitting there for a little while. And then uh, we are working on the fiscal twenty-five budget reconciliation process. Uh, I'm working with Dan Deedy to reconcile the fiscal twenty-five budget. So it reflects the school committee's wishes relative to assessments. We'll be talking a little bit about that in a minute. Uh, and I'm working on a pro forma fiscal twenty-six budget. Uh, I'll be reviewing that tomorrow, particularly the payroll portion, the um, staffing portion tomorrow morning at our admin meeting and sharing some information with principals to start looking at and adjusting. So, you know, I also wanna say that, you know, Dan Deedy in his limited time here really did a lot to kind of get things going, getting payables moving, obviously hiring Patty, which is a, a great move. So kudos to him for that. I really appreciate him. So going into the Berlin and Boylston assessments. So, you know, we have this sort of question about exactly what the um, budget and assessment should look like to the towns. There seems to be a bit of discrepancy between um, what say Berlin, Boylston, the school committee believes. So what we're looking for is maybe a little discretion, uh, a little um, direction from the school committee right now. So we'd like to start working on putting together sort of that, that budget, making sure it's clear what the school committee voted, what they intend to vote. So with that said, there are really a couple ways we can go. So one is to go with the higher assessment amount. That is what we had, I think, what at least Boylston felt had been put forward. And then, or we could look at the lower model, which would then obviously adjust the budget downward somewhat. Or causes to have to readjust the budget to meet those needs. So I guess I'd be looking for some direction with what the school committee would like us to do. Would you like us to build a budget around sort of the higher assessment amounts or the lower assessment amounts?
When you say higher versus lower, was that, is that from town meeting or is that something different?
So, yes, so um, the higher assessment amounts were voted at town meeting. But it seems somewhere in um, the process, there were assessments, particularly that went to the towns that were assessment layers that went to the towns at lower levels. I don't know, I don't know exactly how that played out. I believe the school committee talked about a reduced budget that would then reduce the assessments, but I don't know if the school committee actually voted that budget. So it's, you know, it says a vote if needed. I think that's up to the school committee.
We need a vote. We spoke with Desi, we need a vote.
Yeah, what I recall is we agreed something with the finance committee and select board minutes before meeting. Somebody, somewhere there was a mistake made motioning that to the town meeting. So a different number was voted at the town meeting, which turned out to be higher than the number we agreed to. So what is that? So yeah, we have to vote on something. But if we vote, we do not accept the town's number, what does that mean for us? What does that mean for the town?
So we spoke with Desi about this. Um, fortunately it was before Aaron started. I don't know if you got filled in, but we spoke, we did a meeting with Desi about this and their take was essentially the budget is what was voted at town meeting. So their advice was to move forward with what was voted at town meetings, cause the school committee didn't vote that number, we should vote it now. But, you know, if there was a mutual understanding between both the school committee and the town, we could use the lower number as well. So technically we're entitled to, the school district is entitled to the higher number. That was what was voted at town meeting. It's a tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we could decide to use the number, the original number that we agreed on. So Aaron just needs some guidance so that he can go from there to kind of clean up the budget and have something presentable to start from for the FY twenty-six budget.
And you're not revoting the budget at this moment, you're just giving us direction. We will present something later. But it, it's more a matter of does the school committee want to stand their ground on the higher number? Do you want to go with the lower number? Either's fine with us and we can try to work with that as best.
And Megan captured the conversation we had with Desi really well, right? So we, we need to just make a decision so that we can start planning ahead, right, and, and move forward.
So are there any consequences? Like if we, if we had, uh, let's say, in fact, Berlin voted for a number different from what the school committee voted that then. If we were back then in July or June, we technically, that's a fail, that the budget failed, the assessment failed at the time. Are there any consequences if we choose to go with the number we originally agreed on?
What if it fails, if it's a higher amount?
This is my question. Because at the original town meeting, had they voted a different number that was lower than the number the school committee put forward? The school committee could come back and vote to accept that lower number. Now that it went to the special town meeting, I don't believe that it has any language like that for after the second town meeting. This is the, the state regulation.
My understanding from the conversation we had with Jay Sullivan and Shal, right, was that it wasn't a fail, right? And that as long as we voted to take that higher number, we were completely within our authority to do so. That was my understanding from that conversation. I mean, essentially, the conversation was the town in Berlin screwed up. They should have put our number fourth on the first town meeting, they should have put our number fourth on the second town meeting. And stuff wasn't, wasn't done properly on their part. So, but at this point in time, my understanding, or at least the takeaway I had from that conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, was that this would not be a fail, but we did, the committee did need to go back and improve the number. Again, if we decided we wanted to go with the lower number, it would kind of be like a mutual understanding. Cause that's not the number that was voted at town meeting, but it's lower, so who's gonna complain?
So was Berlin on the phone with Desi? I mean, who was on that call with Desi?
No. I think they had a separate call with Desi.
Was Kim? Oh, they, okay. So was, so was Berlin told that by Desi as well?
So through the chair, Berlin initiated this conversation, initiated this conversation with, with Department of Education. And, and we were second to the conversation with them. So there, after we had a conversation with them, they, the, the Department of Education said that they were gonna put forward like basically spell this all out in, in a letter to us. We have not received that letter yet, or maybe we have.
We did.
So we, when, when it was all done, Department of Education said to us that they would spell this all out for us in a finalized letter, not that first letter we got.
Yeah, that other letter.
What we have not received, they basically said, everything that Megan was talking about, um, they would put in, in writing for us. So we're still waiting. And the one thing that Dan and I and Aaron asked is, obviously that letter needs sent to Berlin as well as school committee. So that everyone be aware, so we have a clean understanding of where we're going from here.
So effectively, Desi is saying we should accept the town's number. Is that what I'm hearing? They're encouraging us to vote on something?
We need to vote, was what they said.
We need to vote on something, but they said the town's number would be in agreement?
Correct. They didn't really care what number we went with. They just were like, you need a number. The correct, my understanding was the proper, at this point, the proper way to follow the rules would be to, that the number that was voted at the town meeting should be the number that the district approves. Again, if we wanna both kind of look the other way and say, alright, we all screwed up. up, we'll take, because, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, Dr. Brown, what about?
I have not. I have not. I, I don't know.
So, so two things. I think that Department of Education is saying, you just need a clean. You need a number. What number are you working off? Are you working off this number, you're working off that number? Because also, let's be clear, that affects Boylston as well too, right? So the assessments, right? How that plays itself out. Aaron and I, for the first time, with Aaron, obviously in the meeting, have a meeting with Kristin tomorrow. I think it's new times that we're going to be with her, the, for Berlin, the town meeting, just so we'll see for that, what takes place.
And so you are confident to tell us right now that if we voted to keep the number we originally voted on June 17th, that would not be considered a failure at town meeting, which would push us into a 112 budget with a December 1st deadline?
Yes. I'll make that, that was, that was a message that we got from them. I have dealt with towns that voted a higher number and later had the second town vote a lower number, and we took the lower number despite the higher vote. And as long as that, that voted the other town was higher, we can take the lower number.
So I know that's the case at the original town meeting. I just, the way the language we use is very specific. Does the same thing about that after the special town meeting?
And it's verbal, like, that's nice that they said on the phone. It would be really nice to have that.
I, I don't disagree with, I think, what we have, they have it written down and memorialized in that letter from the Department of Education, I think it would be really good. And maybe also, like, that's a conversation now we have with Aaron, myself and you, on a call with them as well too. But regardless, whether it does become a fail or we just don't have an agreement on the number, there's no time to do anything before December 1st.
We could maybe do like a Zoom meeting, five minutes to take that vote.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, like, the next step would have been a district one meeting, another district one meeting. With a warrant for your application and all that.
The gist of the conversation was, protocol was not followed at all in this entire process, right? There were multiple broken, it wasn't just like, oh, you guys made this little mistake right here. It was, there were a lot of missteps taken in this process and this, with the town Berlin. Boylston was fine. So what they said is, you know, this is the way you can move forward within, while staying within the bounds of the law. Those were the two options they gave us. So they had said, you know, they didn't care what number we decided to go with. We could do either or. It's just, I think.
You need a number.
We need a number. And Aaron, you know, we've been asking, we wanted to, what do we have for money? What can we do? Like, we've got all these expenses and, and so I think the thing was, we said to him, you know, when are we going to get that budget, that cleaned up budget with all these, you know, changes that we've been asking for all summer and then all fall? And he's, well, I need the number to that. I can't, I can't give you a budget when I don't know what the bottom line is. So that's kind of where we are now. So we could push it off another month and wait, but, go ahead, oh, sorry.
But didn't we agree to that lower number under your breath at the special town meeting? So I'm just wondering, should we just go with the higher number?
Some people look like that, yes.
Also, what's the information we were given when we had that money to take away, right?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't know.
Correct information, or well, yeah. Questionably.
Reach S, yeah.
Do we know what that number was?
I'm sending emails, do you send me?
Yeah, I do have the numbers.
Yes or no?
Yep, I do. Yes, I do know the numbers. I think Aaron does too.
Yeah.
Okay. Personally, I would like to honor the agreement that we made with this finance committee and select board. We shook hands afterwards. I personally shook hands with them. We agreed, so we're together going forward. I don't know who that stands right now, but I would recommend, I'm not recommending any, but I would like to honor the deal that we had that day. But it's not up to me.
Okay.
Could, is it possible to do a vote if we were to accept that lower number with a caveat that says that we have to get verification from Desi stating that this is acceptable, you know, in writing? Therefore, it wouldn't hold it up if we decide to go that way?
Sure, because that could put some work in a way, right?
Confirmation.
And that we do find out, well, I mean, if we find out from Desi that it technically becomes a fail, then I mean, it's over and this, this, that, and the last, they'll come to agree with itself.
I didn't hear any time in those conversations and Megan critted about, did we even fail?
I mean, I'm using general language. There's this non-technical language, basically whatever it stands to pass.
Okay, so do you have a number to vote on there, Aaron?
We're not, we're not looking, I guess, are we looking at the lower or the higher? I mean, that's kind of the question.
Or put a motion out there and then have that conversation too. So the difference is what, $115,000?
Yeah, so the lower number would be an assessment of $8,326,194 to Berlin and $13,37,301 and I guess 48 cents to Boylston. We take the 301.
Can I just ask clarifying questions? So is Boylston right now paying the assessment, their assessment based on the higher number from Berlin?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Can you say the number again?
So we would, so the, the lower number I have from, from, from Dan is $8,326,194 to Berlin, $13,37,301 to Boylston.
And you said Boylston's paying according to the higher number?
They're paying according to a slightly higher number, yes. So what we would do is if, if the school committee voted this, we would just adjust their future assessments.
Higher or lower?
We'd adjust them lower, we would lower. So I think the net for Boylston would be about $52,000.
Okay, so we talked to Boylston about that and, and they had said not to lower the assessment, but to get in the budget because we had, we knew we were going to need.
Yeah, I mean, technically, if we lower, if we lower the assessment, so based on what you guys are set up, right? So if Berlin lowers their assessment, there's a piece that comes out of Berlin Elementary School, of course, is a piece that comes out of Tejanto and the Central Office collectively. If we reduce the overall assessment, Boylston's assessment is going to have to go down by the Tejanto and Central Office number there. Elementary would still stay the same, right? Because of that whole formula. So the formula's a little wonky, so as we know, it is what it is. But, so Berlin would bear the bulk of the reductions through the, through the elementary school. So you'd be looking at $116,000 reduction to Berlin and a $52,694 reduction to Boylston.
How have you been operating this year based on what number?
We've, we've been operating on a bit of a higher number and that's what's in, in the books.
Can you survive the rest of the year as is if we went with the lower?
I mean, there, there's a couple options. You know, we could, we could look at, look at revenues and whether, you know, final, typically when you create a budget, they're based on the governor's revenue estimates and those change throughout the process. So there may be an ability to bring, I know, you know, Chapter 71 up a little bit. We can look at whether those revenues would support sustaining the budget at, you know, that reduced amount. So, and, you know, that's kind of why we're looking for the direction. Can we, can we work one way or the other and make things work on behalf of the committee?
To answer your question, if we're making those adjustments, we need to start now, right? It's like, it's like trying to move a cruise ship, right? It's not a speed boat. It's like, we got to move slowly to make all these adjustments.
So is it?
I don't know if I should ask.
Is it cuts? Personnel? Is that what we're talking about, voting to the lower one?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to make cuts this late in the game to personnel. Might look at positions that are unfilled, things like that, where things are. That's, I think the first thing we look at is, is there, is there something that will help fill the gaps?
When we made that decision to throw what, what, $150,000 extra thousand dollars in the end, what, what fund was it out of?
No, that's what, I think that's, it was a cluster. There was no specifics on that. We were just, said, well, we could find the money. So I don't think he had, I had been asking all summer for a report on that. After we had that vote in the town meeting happen, I had been asking, at the time TMS was running the finances, and I had asked all summer long, like, give me a report. You said this, we were going to cut this, let's see the report. Where's the budget? We got to look at the budget. We got to see, like, where are we now? What are we cutting? What's going on? And we didn't get anything. And then come to find out, like, they just didn't do it. And then come to find out, well, the assessment calculation went wrong. And then come to find out, like, Dan and Aaron are coming in there trying to piece everything back together. So that's kind of where we are right now. So I don't, I don't think there's any specific details. I think he's going to kind of try to back into the details. So this is like one of those really hard votes where you're kind of like trying, we don't, we don't know specifically what would be cut or if we need to cut anything, but we know that something, it's got to come from somewhere.
It can be brought from here.
Right, exactly. It's such a difficult decision.
Can I ask a question? I just want to make sure I understand this. So I know that obviously Berlin Elementary will, will get the front of it. How does it affect Tejanto too? Because you did say that if, if his assessment goes down, then it goes down in Boylston as well. How much are we cutting from Tejanto?
So between Tejanto and, I'm, I'm imagining that the, the bulk of the, the reduction to Boylston is going to be through Tejanto and Central Office, which would be that, it's $52,694.
Would be that number, okay.
And what was the amount again?
The, I'm sorry, the amount?
For the Berlin, the amount?
$116,000.
$116,000 in Berlin, yeah. Almost $116,000.
I just want to be careful of the numbers, right? So there, there's some variability there, right? So I, I know that sometimes it gets on the public record that it was 36 cents, right? I want to make sure that we're still.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this, it hurts me more, but it deals a deal.
I was a peasant for the negotiations, but I feel like to not go for the lower amount is starting off the whole budget season on a really bad page. We had an agreement, we're turning a new page, we're moving forward. I don't want to start with double back on this, again, third year in a row. Like, I think it's better to go with the lower.
Yeah, deal is a deal.
I don't disagree. I just want to make sure our students aren't going to, or our staff, especially, I don't want to, I want to make sure that the students and the staff protect.
Can I ask if, if we are able to and we see the revenues that would support maintaining the budget and the lower assessments with the school committee being a mountain? So, you know, I think I did say that Chapter 70 came in a little higher than the governor and initially proposed, you know, a few things we can look at. Sometimes revenues go down in some categories. I've seen that transportation reimbursement go down, things like that. But, you know, if we look at how many possible gaps that the, would the committee be able to fill that?
How long would you need to do that?
You know, I'd say give us a month, at least a quarter back, or a quarter back by the next school committee meeting.
And then that month, we'll, we'll have a letter, a clear direction from Department of Education, we'll be with Kristin tomorrow from Berlin as well too, so that I might, like, have some information as well too. How much does that hold you up in getting FY '26? Go.
It really doesn't. I mean, we're going to try to run them in parallel. Kind of, you know, asking Dan to kind of take on the bulk of this while I work on the '26 budget.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
But you and I will work together on this.
Taking a little bit more time to get some more specifics seems to make sense, but I would suggest maybe operating under the assumption that it's the lower number?
Okay.
Because that's worst case scenario. That's what I'm trying to write down. Is everybody good with waiting for the details? And the letter?
Yeah, I think we can't make decisions in a silo. Like, I mean, I think talking to Berlin tomorrow is really important and to get that in writing, that word legally would, you know, with the.
And start pursuing the lower number now?
Yeah, I just think.
It's easier to have them take away.
Yeah, I think the big thing though is, you know, we had met with the town of Boylston, did work with the committee, did fund the budget, and I think that, you know, their last words when they were, was do not use our money to fund that, those gaps in Berlin. So as long as we're not taking, like, we had our school choice by school. So as long, you know, we have, we kind of have those fun, I know it's not documented pretty, but we did have school choice funds were by school, so we had like three separate balances. So I think as long as we're not taking funds from Boylston, like, that you said, have the excess to kind of like fill gaps for the cuts that, that might have to be made. Because, you know, we have, Boylston has kind of pushed through and our tax, the taxes in Boylston are higher and so we don't want to, I think if you can find it elsewhere, that's great. Like, I think if there's other things that you can move around, like you said, stuff that might not be needed, then, then that's great. But I think that you can't just take money that, you know, inequitably from Boylston applied over to Berlin to fill the gap.
That won't be the intent. I tried to honor the original agreement.
When do we know Chapter 71 reimbursement or funds?
Say again?
When do we know Chapter 71 reimbursement or funds? Like, do we have an idea of how much?
Chapter 71?
That's what you said.
So that's transportation reimbursement. So all of those items, you know, come through the, the whole governor's budget process. I would have to look at what was it, when it came through the governor's budget, then you've got the House Ways of Means, you've got the Senate budget, then they have a reconciliation. So somewhere over the summer, there were final numbers that would have come out compared to the very first numbers. I have to look at what numbers were used and try to figure out what differential it was.
And just one final thing, I just want to make sure we're clear. There's not like an excess here, right? So this is going to be some work that we're going to have to do in this office to make sure, right? And the, and the other thing I just want to clear, clarity on is, we're not, we're not going to reduce our staffing. That's, that'll be the absolute last thing we're doing now. And that's not where we're at with this at all. We're not in that, that, that pinnacle we're at for this amount of money. But do we have to tighten some purse strings here and there? Absolutely, we're going to have to look at that. But I just don't want anyone to think, A, that we have a free flow of cash going, it's no big deal, because it is going to be high for us to make these moves. And the second thing is, we're not going to look at cutting any staff obviously.
They're not taking a vote tonight? Put you behind in any way?
So to give us direction to pursue an avenue, I don't believe takes a vote in the committee. The consensus of the committee is that we should start pursuing the lower number. The reason we, you know, we kind of wanted to put a vote on this is if, if the school committee wanted to make it official of their own accord. I'm comfortable following the consensus decision unless I'm wrong. Seems to be to try to start working with the lower number. We'll work with the lower number and if something changes, we'll, everybody will know and.
And Megan's, nicely, like, Department of Education already said, we don't really care which avenue you go, you just need a number. You, you need to clarify what number you use so that we have it in our books as well too.
So we definitely do need to vote. We don't need to vote tonight.
Eventually you will have to.
Yeah, we absolutely have to.
Or to give us direction to pursue.
By December 1st.
I think we.
I'm sorry.
He thinks we need to vote by December 1st. I, I think, we were, this was something we were supposed to do in October.
December 1st is a drop dead date for school wide access, isn't it?
I don't think they're initially putting us into a 112 budget kind of scenario, right? I think they're accepting that we have something, we just need to define it.
I'd be a little more comfortable with that, right?
I would, so that was the last thing I said on that, that meeting is, I want it in writing. I want, I want, I don't want any more folklore. I want it in writing so that I can show school committee, I can show Berlin, I can show Boylston.
Yeah, then they did come up with that letter. We all read the letter, right? The kind of was, it was kind of like, clean your act up, we got to follow the law. But it was not specific to this situation, it didn't address the specific situation.
And I will have myself, Dan and Aaron, try to get a call with them to see, like, exactly where they are with that letter.
Because we, so we have our as-dated meetings scheduled for the '26. We could do a five-minute Zoom to do a vote, the whole holidays and before. Just, you need, you need finale, we need finale. You need to get the work done. You're going to do the work assuming that's the way we're going to get it, but you need some, I'm going to bounce, so.
In particular, if it's going, you're thinking about going the other direction, right? We need to have conversations with both Berlin and Boylston. So it's just, there's some lag, but we really need enough to base that announcement.
Yeah, all right. Do the work on the lower number, assuming, and we will see if we can follow the desk and get something and possibly have a Zoom on the '26.
It would be helpful to see, I agree, it would be helpful to see the detail. If we go with the lower number, what does that look like from a, not, like.
Yeah, if you give an idea of your plan.
The cost center, like, we need to see the budget. We don't. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Yeah, like, it's just like, all right, we're, do you wanna go with the lower number? But if it means like, oh, look at this gaping hole.
We need to know what it is.
Yeah, I know, we gotta, like you said. So I wanna, at this point, I feel like personally, I wanna see what the heck is going on with this money before I make a vote.
And just know, each, each day, we're covering different things with this budget. We're, we're, we're trying to capture, figure out every day, something new. Okay. All right. I'll be doing some business.
I'm good. So I was, I was saying, Mr. Chair, can we pause now and see if I can get the live stream? Because I, we got, I got partially driven over.
Perfect.
Uh, yeah, so let's take a, what, five minutes?
Sure.
Five minutes, yes.
You are all live, right? Oh, all right. So we're, we're making sure our pitch is, yes, the live stream, we're gonna go back on and live running. Uh, just so nobody's upset, we do have a recording of the first portion of this meeting. That will be up soon as possible. So, uh, continue on, I believe we are now up to superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. So I'm gonna keep mine real brief because we're gonna do our MCAS presentation. Just a couple of things. I was able to attend with Jess, with Jessica, the MAS, MAS C conference. There were some great things that we attended, actually some of them together as well too. We'll share those in future school committee meetings, some of the, some of the feedback we got, some of the professional line that we attended. I plan on sharing a lot with my principals and admin, the more I'm able to. Tonight, um, the focus of our meeting is, is going to be doing the MCAS presentation. So a couple of things, a little different than you normally have, and I apologize just to look at it a little differently. Um, you have in your drive, there's a seventy-four page document that was provided by our, our department heads, our principals, our curriculum directors. There's a lot of information, a lot of data in the FA MCAS, a lot that we still need to unpack. I've asked my two curriculum directors, John and Sally, are gonna be doing a shot of presentation of MCAS. There is a lot of questions that we have, a lot of questions that you're gonna have. We're just starting to look at this data. And we'll go through it. Ask us the questions you want, because we're gonna continue to be looking at it and seeing where we need to go and what direction our district. After they do their presentation, I'll give a synopsis of where we're at as a district and where we're gonna head, and we'll go from there. John and Sally.
Check everyone's parts out. Oh, okay. So yes, thank you for putting up the other presentation that I submitted, we'll all take a look at, because the department has worked really hard on that, and there's just some great information in there about a few different term, vocabulary terminology that's used when, and we have data is talked about with Desi, and also because there was some other charts that you guys, and they are, that we didn't have an hour before. But we're gonna go ahead and present to you the information that we pulled from all that information for you tonight. So the first thing we're gonna take a look at is math. Oops. Oh, yeah, I told you, my, my. Thanks. And so we're gonna start off with math for Tohonto. And as you can see, this first graph is a plot graph that shows the percentage of our Tohonto students that were either meeting or exceeding for the MCAS for grades six, seven, eight, and ten versus how the state fared for that as well. And then on the next couple of slides, we show six, seven, and you can see eighth and tenth grade. And you can see that there's four years worth of data for all of those. And where the other graph just showed meeting and exceeding, these graphs show all four categories for scoring. So I think it's important to take a look at those because, for example, let me just use sixth grade as an example. From year to year, you might see that, for instance, in the meeting, which is Korean, there's just a slight change, but, um, in meeting, but if you look at exceeding, or if you look at where there's no, you know, where there's no passing, the numbers change, right? So it's good to look at all the data in all categories over all these four years. And then we also have a scatter plot chart, and this is a chart where we want to see our dots up in the upper right-hand quadrant, because that's where we show prior points of the marriage. So according to the key, you can see, we've got the state, the star at the center, the green, the brighter green dot in the middle is the average for our, our district for the grades that we're looking at here. And then you can see we've got the dots for the other grades as well.
Hey, down to the elementary level, I'm gonna remind you, because I say it every year, so I might as well say it now, that the MCAS task is one task, but one time a year, it doesn't measure the work of children or teachers or a school district, but it does give us solid data that we can look at, as we begin to say, and start to make some decisions. Very similar pattern here is for both schools, third, fourth, and fifth grade this year. And then, and I do this graph a little differently, is this sort of floor, I would tell you. This is not the appropriate way to display this information because it's not contiguous over time, it's different data points, but it gives you a better sense into intuitively of how things are. You can see that everybody's math scores are pretty flat. We do a little better one year, Boilston kept us up the other year, and the state is, you know, the state. We did break out some of these, and it was in here more just for your reference. These are how kids do in the three grades in terms of the separate categories that are assessed. There's some strikes, there's some weaknesses. Um, and this is our scatter plot. For, this is Berlin. Fourth grade is the red, fifth grade, hooray for them, is the yellow, and then the green dot is the average of the two. This is Boilston, same thing, red is fourth grade, green is fifth grade. And the other side is the average.
All right, so then we move on to the ELA. And once again, we have the same type of bar graph that shows grades six, seven, eight, and ten. Again, the green bars are showing some of the students that were either exceeded in the scoring, and then the blue is for the state. We were able to get some of that similar information that you just saw on John's for the, for the math for ELA for Tohonto, so this is a breakdown of categories. And then once again, we have grades six, seven, eight, and ten for four years worth of data showing you how students scored in all areas of scoring. And then this is the scatter plot chart for ELA. Again, same center that the other ones were, so you can see where our data on that.
ELA. Some speed, but it's both nuts. Same graph again, this is third, fourth, and fifth grade in both schools. Comfortably, I mean, don't really look at the state anymore, you know, we should be doing that instead, but comfortably have the state on. In the breakdown again, again, this was for your information. We would have this graph for math, I should own this, but I erased it, so. Um, and this is whole school, and we've talked about this before, and I did mention it in the last graph, I was too busy owning, but it's not the right kind of graph. We use the whole school number, whole school meets or exceeds in this graph, because it tends to even out some of the discrepancies between grades over the year. So like mine's third grade this year, a little weaker than normal. I could create a little stronger, so you can get, they even out over time, it's a much larger group of kids. Um, and then this is Berlin's growth chart for the, for that assessment, you can see they're like basically on top of each other. And this is Boilston's.
All right, and then finally we have the science, technology, and engineering results. So our first chart shows for grade eight, how our students did in terms of meeting and exceeding versus the state. And we also have four years worth of data, just like we showed in the ancient map. And then for the biology results, again, we show the, one of the students who's the state. And for this particular test, there was a change in the format a few years ago, so they only have three years worth of data to compare.
And then, of course, the kids in fifth grade take science, technology, and engineering. It's the first time they take it. The three schools, as we've talked about before. This is how we've done over time. It was a really sad year in twenty-twenty-two. Remind pals in, in Berlin kind of slipped down. But other than that, you can see that the scores are relatively stable, especially the state's score again, flat as a pancake. This is my favorite one. This is my favorite slide of all of that. There's no growth for science and technology in fifth grade or eighth grade because they don't take it the next year. So they don't grow there. This is how we look, so we talk about, we don't want to compare us to the state average, because it's kind of meaningless, you know? The state average includes Springfield and Boston, places that really struggle. This is how we did when you line up all of the schools, or all of the grades, and all of the schools, and all of the Commonwealth. This is where we foul meets or exceeds in that group. So you can see why the top one there, um, in math, grade three, um, Berlin, just, you know, we, we beat sixty-three percent of the schools. Boilston did better than eighty-two percent of the schools. I was real excited about grade five, they beat ninety-seven percent of the schools in math, and of course, my first thing with this rumor was, what about the other three percent? Which she did not find funny at all, but it, it was funny to me. Same thing with Tohonto, you can see where they fell. And then if you down, it's ELA at the bottom. Again, you know, there's our great one for Boilston, their third grade ELAs, where they did better than ninety-one percent of the third grades in the entire Commonwealth. Some really remarkable scores. So that gives you a sense of where we file statewide in a more meaningful way. That is the presentation.
So, so we're going to refer first, John and Sally, thank you for that. I know that's a really abbreviated version, I know it's different than what you had in the past. Take a look at the, the data that they gave you, and in the drive they have, there's a lot of information. Again, the teachers and department heads did a nice job. Thank you too for submitting. So outside of looking in, and I'll consider myself being outsider after a little over two months, there are things we're doing really well. We have, we have pockets of excellence that we're doing in this district, but there are things that we have concerns. We're, we're saying we're doing that at the state, we are, but that's certainly not a benchmark that we wanna keep, because the state is not doing well. In particular, math. You know, we sat in a call with all, with all the superintendents with the commissioners talking about the math scores, you know, they're, they're giving the theory that ELA was either easier to teach, not that it was easier at all anyways to teach during COVID, but reading in ELA was an easier subject to be able to work with students as opposed to math, not having them manipulated. There's a lot of reasons why. And, and those are just some of, some of the theories. But we have, we have some work to do, we have some things we really need to be looking at. We're looking at, we had a, a meeting with the commissioner today, so that we're starting to look at the data that John and Sally did a great job of, looking at light districts. So I know how we did in comparison to the state, but what are the other light districts like Berlin and Boilston, and the state of Massachusetts? And how do we do, fair against that? That's what really should be bringing out. And based on that, what direction are we going? And I purposely didn't wanna ask our principals to say, okay, here's what we need now to, to get better, because we're not there yet. We are so not ready to be able to decide where we're gonna go. Because we can't have the one-offs anymore. It can't be, this is what Sally wants, this is what Lisa wants, this is what John wants. What do, what do we want for the district? And where are we gonna focus in on so we can start seeing some growth taking place? I used the analogy before to Mike, it's like moving a cruise ship. We really need to, it takes a while to move us, but we really need to see where are we going to put our money in? Where are we gonna put our talent in? What are we gonna put our professional learning in that we can focus on there that's gonna start seeing some results? Again, professional learning, yes, absolutely. Do we need to look at our curriculum? Absolutely, that's our backbone, right? And where is that continuation in our curriculum? What does it look like from the elementary school as it travels to the middle of high school? That is a lot of work. John and Sally have done a nice job, our department did a nice job looking at that data, but we haven't even nearly touched a scratch at the top of what this data looks like. We gotta spend some time. Again, John said, it's one assessment, but are there significant things that we're seeing across this district that we need to focus on? So again, it'd be, it'd be, wouldn't be the right thing for me to do as a superintendent, say, here's what we need, because we don't know yet. We gotta really look at that, and that's the work that we're gonna do as administrators. And we're gonna get some help, look into this data and taking this deep dive into this data and see what really is not working well and what's working really well, that we gotta focus our energy on, is something that's gonna take some time. So we'll be coming back to you later on with some of this data and saying, okay, here's where we need you to focus on, here's where we need your help, when we're going to the towns and saying, this is what we need. And it not, might not necessarily just be staffing, it might not be some professional work, we're not sure. But we're gonna look at it, dig deep into it, and be able to give you a fuller report about what we need from you guys as a school committee to help us as we're going in front of Berlin and Boilston and when financially we need to be able to improve some success with us. So I'm not using that as a disclaimer, but it is, we're not ready yet. We looked at this data, we're really just not at the top of it, we got a lot more work to do. Pockets of excellence, a hundred percent, there's some great things happening, but there are some things that we're also sitting there saying, there's something, something off there that we need to be working, that we need to be looking at. Questions? Anybody have questions? We got work.
I have a question.
You have work?
Say it, else.
I have a question. It's more, so I guess the thing I'm struggling with is the equity between the elementary schools. And so I have a son in that third grade class at EBS, it's very small. And what I'm struggling with in my head is, okay, so are, is the difference in the scores between the two schools just because there's different kids? And some kids, no matter what you do and what you teach and what the curriculum is, this is what they're gonna get on the test? Or is the difference on the scores because of the way the curriculum is and the, what the teachers are doing? Are we consistent? Are we equitable between the two schools? So I guess, I'm just kinda throwing that out there, it's more of a comment. You know, I know we, we, I feel like this is like, we talk about this every year, this is like my third time, right, or fourth time doing MCAS scores, and I feel like every time we say, you know, let's keep striving to make sure we have those consistencies between the elementary schools, because at the end of the day, they're both, all those kids are gonna be at Tohonto together. And, and we don't want, you know, some to have a leg up versus others, you know? So I guess my comment is, I just wanna make sure that we're striving to, to kind of bridge that gap between those two elementary schools and that everything we're doing, in one, we're doing in the other. So all the great things, like the ELA stuff that's happening over there, like, are we making sure that all of that stuff is happening in Boilston? And vice versa, with the math and the, whatever happened in the third grade. And again, I know, it could just be like my son's, MJ's classes, there's like thirty-something kids in it. Could it just be that that's just a bright group of that kids? It's just the kids, it doesn't even have anything to do with what's being taught or, you know, and looking to the math coach and the, the coaches that go across both schools to kind of, to work without, to kind of make sure.
High quality teachers, small class sizes.
I was gonna say.
High quality teachers, small class sizes.
Yeah, that turn the classes in that third grade away, or bigger.
Those are the two things. Instructional coaches, I believe, and you're gonna see, not only safety is something I'm gonna bring up budgetarily, but instructional coaches. Our teachers are good, but everybody needs a coach, and one needs to get better at their, their, their trade, right? Tom Brady had a coach, right? Everybody needs a coach, everyone needs to get better at their trade. So we're looking to move forward, and I'll, I'll share my little thing is instructional coaches. We need to have them in place so they can get in those classrooms with the principals and see what's working, what's not working. Again, everyone's working really hard, we wanna make sure, we're looking at that data and looking at the curriculum, working hard, all moving in the right direction. So it's work that needs to be done.
There are, I mean, to reflect on your observations, there are strong and weak classes.
Right.
You know, just in that sense, class size doesn't matter. You're just in these small groups of these small cohorts. You get a bunch of kids who are just fabulous. And then the very next year, even in some of the same siblings, they're strugglers. They're struggling behaviorally, they're struggling conceptually. So there are, there are a lot of variables. Class size is an issue. I think that teacher consistency is an issue. At Boyleson, this had to do with that over the years for teachers to teach one grade this year and the next year. It's a lot to learn. Or we don't do that. We don't have that issue.
And I agree with you, John, but it's also our job as educators to take those kids that are struggling and move them forward, right? So this is, you talked about God came from Boston, right? When I started up at a level four school and we moved those kids up to a level two. So it's our job as educators to make sure that we're making those kids move forward.
As long as growth numbers don't.
That's right.
That's why we show you this scatter.
That's right.
So growth numbers.
But when all the kids are coming to us the same way, they come to us a little bit differently, right? What's happening in one household might be happening in another household. What educational experiences kids have, they all come to us different. But our job is to give them an education and our teachers to work, but no matter where they're at, and take them to move them forward. So that's why it's not only looking at that third grade, but how is that same cohort of kids going to do in fourth grade and then in fifth grade? And if we don't see improvement happening, then that's a concern for us with that cohort of third grade kids. It work? So you mentioned you're comparing like schools. Specifically, the schools that we, so the exit data from eighth and ninth grade to Tohoto. If we can still get that full set of data, that'd be good, but those schools that they go to, how do we compare to those? Do you look specifically at those? Have they taken MCAS?
Yeah. So what we look at is like when you look at the economics of each town, that's what the pop education does. So what's a like community? That's financially, population wise, and they chop that all off, of course. And I have not looked at that yet, but when John's showing you the stat, we can look at that more like population. So I don't know what our sister, our brother district is right now, but they, does anyone know that?
What I'm talking specifically, there's a list of pretty regular schools that exit data is showing that they're choosing over Tohoto. So how do we compare? Do we compare? Can we compare?
St. John's has to ask about, right?
I mean, can we compare? So St. John's doesn't take any MCAS, private, private schools don't?
In Chova, I heard that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they opened up school choice for a bunch of kids.
I'm sorry.
Chova recently opened up school choice for the first time in a while. So they blocked the last year a bunch of kids. So they might be good.
Yep. So that's data that, first of all, we're going to be looking at, but it's available on the website for the pop education. They, you can plug it in, Berlin, Boyleson, and they'll give you all of that. It's, I don't think it's all available just yet. Maybe some of it is. I haven't dug that deep into it yet, but it's all up there to see exactly what, how we're doing in comparison to other districts and other schools as well, too.
In one of the presentations, it was mentioned that the specific questions weren't shared this year. Was it content? Like the subject matter, was that shared?
The standard was shared. The problem with this is sometimes somebody who writes questions thinks that that's a great question for that standard and they're wrong. An example I always use is from a third grade test several years ago. The fox crossed the stone bridge. What part of speech is stone? My kids thought, well, stone is a thing, it's an object, it's a noun. You see, you have to take some of those with a grain of salt. And that was the bear, that would be really hard to not get any questions to show.
And to that same point, one of the people with questions in the fourth grade was, what are you doing in a snow day, right? I think a couple of years ago, that, right? I'd say if you, when this percentage of kids are ninety-eight percent free reduced lunch, they're not having the snow day activities that maybe some of us in this room kids have and experience, right? So, you know, score those. So sometimes there's not equity with those questions as well, too. So we need to be looking at all that. But the MCAS questions are supposed to be based on our standards. And so we need to be looking at that. So how is our curriculum aligning with the standards? And making sure that we have that taking place. Got some great work happening here, but we need to really look a little bit closer back. John, where the trends on your graphs don't look great. And it looked like elementary scores were really high, whole school versus Tohoto, or mostly nineties versus mostly eighties. What's going on between the elementary to the high school level, that switch? And that's specifically the seventh grade scores on one of your graphs. Maybe you called it out in your presentation. Twenty twenty-two, that fifth grade, went down to seventh grade, and also scores didn't look great. Although maybe they were improved, but what's going on trends, elementary to high school or middle school to high school? And then that particular class seems to be, you know.
And that happens sometimes, I think, because that seventh grade, this year's seventh grade scores was something that we were all talking about because I think that is a deeper time.
Well, we saw that when they were in fifth grade, too.
Right, right. And so you do get grades that are not as adept at MCAS testing as we would like. It's not an excuse for us. We're still going to do more work to make sure that they're prepared for the task without teaching them the test. And I think that's the challenge for us. We, you know, we kind of gave ourselves a little slap around the hollow with COVID. But that's over. And while there are still kids and families who are struggling to readjust, I see it in our kindergarten kids still. Who were babies in COVID or toddlers. But they're struggling with structure. Because they didn't have it. Because they were all, everybody was home. It was just chaos for a while. So you're still seeing some of that. That particular group, that particular cohort, I think is one of the ones that we'll do really good to.
We'll admit they do sound great. We're looking at that as well. But we all know here in these meetings in fifth grade, and here we are two years later, we still don't know what's going on. All right, so what we're going to do. And then, so my other question was, the trends look like they're coming down the last couple of years. They're not going up in some of your graphs. And then it seems like they leave fifth grade with pretty decent scores. Sixth and seventh grade, sixth through eighth grade, seems like they're just being pulled along or he put out a little bit. Everything jumps up in tenth grade, graduate. I know we don't have that problem anymore. It's going forward, but what explains that?
These tenth grade tests is the easiest test you take.
Of course it is.
It's because it's blood. You've got to graduate. Nobody wants kids not to graduate.
So what's happened in sixth through eighth from elementary school?
That's another one. We were just talking about this. So we're doing, not to get off topic. We were doing this deep dive in terms of what happens with our kids who have special needs and how they perform on this test. Because we got called out by the state. And we started to look at what are the factors that impact student performance? And one of the questions that I have is, what happens from fifth grade to sixth grade? Because it's an entirely different environment. You've got kids at my school. And you know, it's family, it's comfortable, it's safe. They're worried. It gets to middle school. It's not that it's not safe, that they're not happy. But it's a different world. It's way bigger. There's really big kids. And aside from the beautiful lunch, it's a huge adjustment.
While the big, beautiful lunch is a huge adjustment, too. That's a second. So to this, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, we were just talking about class sizes. So when you get all those kids up here, didn't we have one of the biggest sixth grades? A hundred kids. We're not, we're not expanding the number of teachers we have. So how many kids are in a sixth grade class, would you say, like, especially when we have the big years?
It was twenty-five in each.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's happening? So one of our focuses, one of our goals for the last two or three years has been improve the culture at Tohoto Middle School. We got the assistant principals, the other positions we hired. Is that helping? What else needs to be, what are we going to be seeing when it comes time to talk about this budget that's going to be needed? And you mentioned you're working on that. Okay, so you're working on that. You're always working on that. When are we going to have some things?
Yep. Great question. We got, we got stuck on this spot.
No, no, it's okay. We got, we have a lot. We really do. We got to figure this out. We're just getting this data. There is a whole transition from kids going from Berlin and Boyleson where they're cultured and nurtured, right? And then all of a sudden they're going to the big boy tables, right? Where the organization skill alone, and then to be able to prepare and move from classroom to classroom and travel from place to place. It's a whole different organizational skill. There are programs that are out there, Abbott, the one which is a great program that teaches kids. How do they move from elementary school to middle school? How they transition that? It's not just here. You need to know that is, when kids are moving to middle school and junior high school, they tend to drop a little bit their scores. They do. But that's not an excuse, Mike. We need to spend some time looking at this. We have not, we have not had the opportunity to really dig down and figure out what we're going to do, what it looks like in the conversations we have, yeah.
I mean, I hope we have some answers to it because we've been talking about it for a few years. The transition from elementary to middle school, the transition from middle school to high school, Tohoto, culture around that, what's happening, what's changing.
We've been talking about it for a couple of years now.
Okay.
I know you weren't here.
Yeah.
But it feels like we've done a lot, but we haven't seen a lot of results. I'm not saying we've seen no growth, though I'm not putting on it, but these trends are falling. They're going down.
There's concerns that we need to be looking at. We really do. We try to figure out what. But it seems to me, when I'm looking in the past, we sort of, we're like a blinking Christmas tree. And no one likes a better, a Christmas tree looking better than I can, right? But we need to have sort of a steady, steady level. Like, what? And I'll go back to it. What is our strategic plan? What, where are we going and what do we all believe that what we need to do to go forward to show growth? I think we got a lot of one offs. And again, that's why principals aren't here today saying, this is what we need. This is what we need, another math teacher. We need this, we need this, because we gotta figure that out. We just seem to be putting Band-Aids on things and saying, this is what we need to do. But what is our strategic plan? So that if we all decide, the community, school committee, our principals, our students, our teachers all say, this is the direction we're going in. If Mike comes and says, I want you to do this out, Mike, it's not a strategic plan. This is the direction we believe we're going to go forward. One of the best gifts I gave Kim and Wilbur when I left was completed five year strategic plan. So they have it in place and they know what direction we're going. We don't have that yet. And that's the work I really want to do before I give that, because for you, for me to say to you right now, well, this is what we're going to do to get better. I can't be just being alone. I need you guys telling us what you hear in the community. I need my principals. I need the parents that are on this Zoom call, whatever they're on right now, saying, this is what we need. I need the senior staff. I need the select board, everyone. So we're all of us together. So that this way, we're going to travel that together, not say, Al, you said this and then that. I need you guys telling me as well, too. It's not just us alone that's going to come up with this. Strategic plan.
We had, we had a plan. We had a three year plan, five year plan. It was shocked around. It was shocked around in PTOs. It was shocked around in nineteen Carter. It was shocked around. You weren't here.
Yep.
You guys were here. So what's happening? That should be on this little meeting every single January, is where are we at for strategic plan? We always did. This is where we're at. This is what we're doing, but we're.
Well, I think a lot of things were put off, right? We had, you know, this year we're going to do this and this. Well, we can't, so we'll cross out three of those. And then the second year, all right, we're going to cross out those things too. So, you know, there was a three year plan that looked beautiful. The presentation was like, yeah, very inspiring.
We did get a lot, though. I mean, especially last year. We got a lot of it. So now we're, we're in year two of.
But we did put off the math teacher, right? That was last year's plan to get that for the high school.
We cut, two years ago, we cut, we were trying to like push through a ton of stuff. And I think there was like thirty items and we checked it out, too. So, yeah, I agree. I think that we did have plan. I think this was the last year of plans, right? So this, so we need a new plan either way, regardless. But yeah, Jeff had a five year plan, right? And then Carol took it and turned it into a three year plan.
It is in year three. It took us a good.
It's in year three of the three year plan.
It took us a good year in hand and overhand to get this strategic plan, to get everybody's input into it. And so that we really have a direction which we're going. Really.
Part of the strategic plan, the challenge, and we didn't do this with jobs, I can say that because I was there. It was a wish list.
Yeah.
Of wonderful things that we could do. And they were all wonderful things that we could do. It turns out that the towns do not have an endless supply of money.
Right.
As we experienced now in the last couple of years. So our strategic plan, this is why I'm excited that Al's going to take us through this, has to also be strategically realistic, that's right. We can't just throw money at these problems. Part of this training, right, with Cindy's got a bunch of new teachers who are just starting to get green. Part of its strategy, you know, in Berlin, we have the kids in fourth and fifth grade shift, so they start to get used to that. They have one teacher for math, they have one teacher for reading. Those are things that, you know, did that work out better in Boyleson as well? There's another strategy that we can use. But we have to start figuring this through. So whatever Al says we're going to start, I'm like, oh, that's no.
The towns are going to be invested in this so that they can say, they're committing to this, right? We hold them, we had them vote in their towns as well, too, saying, okay, you're on board with this, so it's not just us alone. So that's the work we're going to need your help with as well, too, and moving forward with this. It's really what a district should have, is a strategic plan so you know what direction you're going in. But it's got to be better. It can't be just, we're hiring a math teacher today, we're going to put a coach in tomorrow. We gotta figure out what we're going to do so we can stick to it and make sure that you're going to be able to budgetarily, be able to afford it, to John's point, year for year. It's work.
Yeah, we do not have that. We had a massive wish list that we couldn't afford. I agree.
To John's point, a wish list is not a strategic plan.
Yep, yep. I mean, there were some amazing things on it and, but we didn't.
Linking Christmas tree. Anybody else have any? Yeah.
Oh, now I was just saying, like, I love to talk about the strategic plan because, like, everybody said we can't expect to throw money at things. What I would like to see, you know, kind of everybody moving in the same direction, like, are we going to develop pathways? What are those pathways going to look like? You know, what is our focus? What do we want our graduates, you know, the students? So we all have a vision of what those graduates are going to be and then focus our energy. So everybody's speaking the same language.
That's right.
About moving the kids in the same direction and providing those opportunities.
The number one question we as a school committee should be asking is, what colleges and universities are kids getting accepted to? That is the telltale of where we're going. When I was doing admissions in Vederini, the question they all asked me, even in preschool, is, where do you raise readers go? What high school are they getting accepted to? Are they going to St. John's? Are they going to, to, you know, are they going to Holy Name? Where are they going? They're going to St. Peter's. They want to know what schools they're going into, right? Which state are they? They want to know what their schools are. That's our number one, is where our kids are going, college, university, or technical, or job post, or the service. Yeah, we've asked that.
We asked for that a year ago.
We can get that.
Yeah.
We can get that. Just know the one thing about that data is, we can find out where the kids are going, right? We just don't know whether they stay two years or they leave after the third year or if they graduate or not. That's the one thing we don't have. But we should be looking at and we should be celebrating those kids that are getting into either Ivies or Mini Ivies. Because that's the telltale of how successful we are. Besides our kids graduating and walking across the state.
I feel like Lisa, didn't you present that last June?
Yep, there, it is. It is in the report from June.
Okay, so we did see it last year. Because there were some really good, there was a Boston College in there.
And you're continuing to track that so we can see track the data over time.
Every year.
The exit data, too, if we can get that, we'll listen to you ask for it. Does anybody else have any other questions on MCAS?
I was thinking, interesting with that, too, like, you know, are kids getting scholarships? Like, are they getting the honor program that you asked? Like, I mean, they're nice, but also are they getting money to go to this, too?
The whole goal is that eight to nine drop, try and eliminate that as much as we can. Can't get them all, but that was our, that was the goal we wanted to. What was that like? I'm sorry. The drop in students from eight to nine.
Really, from sixth to ninth, right?
Okay, gotcha. All right, any other questions? Final one once.
So we don't think a little different this year? I'm not sure if you liked it this way or not. I mean, it was sort of expediated. I appreciate what Sally and John and our pop heads and principals did as well, too. Okay, thank you.
All right, off our business item, we'll do the next list. So we have two MOUs with our boys.
Sure. I have, one of the things we talked about, I think, at the last school pre-meet, I mean, the one previous, is about remembering and understanding for our school resource officers. We did have a current one. So I had the old chiefs of police. We have current ones that are signed by me and signed by the chiefs of police. But I'm now looking at them and they have a spot for Megan for you to sign.
You could cross my name off if I'm excited.
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to actually have Nicole do a new one for us and we can.
That was my first question. The chiefs are on board.
Good, mostly the chiefs. And again, I mean, not being disrespectful, I just, not folklore, I just leave the paperwork that goes along with it. So we wanted to make sure that we had the MOUs that go with it. And now we do have them in place. I appreciate Nicole, if you could just do a new one in this one with all my excited. This way it's just clean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I agree. I agree.
What's that? Assuming we improve it.
That's right.
Is it the same? Is it the same from last year?
Yes. Couple verbiage tweaks that the chiefs wanted to put in, some small semantic stuff, but not the page.
We should have done this in May. That was my bad.
All right. So can I have a motion, please, to approve the MOU with the Brooklyn Police Department?
So moved.
Lori, Megan, we'd like to discuss this. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Yes? All right, that motion passes. May I have a motion, please, to approve the MOU with the Brooklyn Police Department?
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Megan? We'd like to discuss this. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? All right, so that is approved as well. So we ask to get the new copies, get them decided, and then I'll sign.
Yep. And if I can just say one thing, I have a meeting, I think, scheduled this week with the two chiefs, Rich Cameron as well, too, who's sort of our safety liaison. We'll get together to make sure that we're going to implement these and making sure we have an understanding in cases ever emergency, like where, but our work comes. And Rich will be at a school pre-meet in December to give us an update of safety of where we're at for our model, so I'll have him be coming. I'm sure that will be fast.
All right, so that's the end of that agenda. We do have executive session, the long agenda, so I'm going to read this motion here. May I have a motion, please, to enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, purpose three. Discuss strategy, respect, like bargaining, Brown and Boyleson Educators Association, EBDA, and litigation, Mississippi versus EBRSD. General meeting may have potential to affect the bargaining, given positions of public body and the chair, so the others. And we will not be returning to the whole set.
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Second, Lisa? Roll call, Beth?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Lisa? All right, that's the message. We're entering executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.